Maybe my energy's picking up.
Good morning, everyone. This is our last budget meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mike. So what we have today is, I put a little sheet there in front of you. Sorry where we're going. We have two items in front of you today. Pier complex and golf course. And then the accommodation tax, sand tax. Basically, we went over those during the sand discussions and just a quick overview on those. And then we'll do a very overview, just like we did. We got some sheets that we've been handing out for the additional staff capital improvement for general fund. We'll talk about the increases. We'll talk about the separation. And then we'll go to enterprise fund, do the same thing, and let you know where we are on rates. Everything staying same tax rate on the Ad Valorem side and the same sand tax rate on the sand tax side. So we'll go ahead and get started. You're going to turn to section 49. I believe it's a pink tab near the back of the book.
There. Good job.
Mine is. I'm assuming everybody else is. Morning, Charlie.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad you could join us.
I just would miss this for the world.
Traffic's bad out there on Oak Island Drive.
Oh, yeah. Always is.
Everybody on page 49?
We're there.
All right. We'll go ahead and get started. Just a quick overview. Lisa does very well, and as we know, she's doing a great job up there. We're making a little bit of money. One of the large things you'll see here in a minute is where we did the pier house restaurant rehab this year that we had planned. We hadn't planned on as many pilings and those kind of things underneath the structure needing to be done. Hadn't planned on the windows being held in with lattice. And we hadn't planned on the doors not having jams or anything built in around them. We know the building's old, so we had to do a few extra carpentry things there. But Scott's people sort of oversaw that, and EB, our engineer, looked at it as well, and we were able to get those things done. But it did come in around $110,000 or something like that. So that's not on Lisa. I just want to clarify. That's not on her. It's in her budget, and she wished we would take it out, but it just falls within that same department. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's not on Lisa. But you can see on the revenues, and her and Mr. Hatton went over these sort of as benchmarks, goals to accomplish again. And as you can see, things are continually increasing for her at the facility. If you have any questions on the revenues, if not, we'll proceed.
To offset some of the costs that Mr. Kelly was talking about, we transferred $100,000 from the pier project itself over to the pier complex to make up some of those costs.
But.
See the $100,000 down there on the bottom?
I see that, but curious, you're transferring from the COVID-19 fund?
Yes. When we did the bonuses.
I'm sorry?
When we did the bonus for all of the departments, we had extra money left over in that COVID fund, so we outused a bit of the COVID to each department.
It's not restricted? No, that wasn't, no.
It was not restricted funds whatsoever. We were to do anything we want.
Okay. Are these, those are the funds you got two years ago? Right. It's these new funds, the art funds, that has a tie to it? Here, we may need them again, but we'll see.
Always the optimist.
So if you turn to 49, 749. The summary sheet. The part thing we did add this year is a pier complex maintenance person to try to take, as we described in Scott's budget, some of the workload off that we've been dragging Scott into, having to do the maintenance, the sweeping, the cleaning, the shoveling, and nailing, and screwing, and those kind of things on a daily basis, trying to give her somebody that she could utilize on a daily basis to keep some of the maintenance up on that. Scott's people still had to be utilized on larger things and those kind of things, but we put in another part-time person for those activities.
The expenses and what have you are pretty much the same. Very little changes.
Yes, sir. She's bashful this morning.
That's okay.
She's bashful this morning. She runs a pretty tight ship.
She does.
There's not much.
She runs, she always runs a good ship. She does a great job.
Got some holes in the.
There's holes in.
In all the time.
So again, our apologies to you. I know you sat through the long prologue to this process, and we're quite patient. Do take a bow for the work that you've done, the scheduling work. Certainly, we're headed in the right direction. I've asked management to update the financial plan to see if there are things that we need to provide you with to make you even more successful. I know the financial plan was developed and COVID hit, and probably we need to throw that one out the window. Clearly, your event schedule is beginning to percolate, for want of a better word. Do you see that continuing to climb in?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think what's interesting is that it's not centered on weddings. For example, this weekend, we have three weddings, but next Wednesday, there's a celebration of life, and next Saturday, a family reunion, and then graduation party. So it's become a place where people go for other types of events, not just weddings.
Are you utilizing your other employees to help you set up for those events? Are you doing that yourself?
I do it myself.
We talk to her all the time.
I don't, actually, I'll interrupt him. There aren't that many employees when you look at the number, but for the most part, they're working the shifts that they want to work and are not interested in being there at 6:00 in the morning or at midnight, doing the work that needs to be done.
Lisa, you can't do it all by yourself. You're doing a fabulous job, but you can't do it all by.
And that's what this extra person will do.
Okay.
Very good.
So I'm pleased to hear you say that we've, we're moving away from dependency on weddings because, back of the envelope math, you'd need about 75 or 80 a year to break even. So the more diversified we are, the better. And that's why I'm pressing on the financial plan, because I have a suspicion that you need more marketing penetration to get that. You're going to need more of a budget, and you may well need more help in producing materials, et cetera.
Is it my turn?
Go ahead. You can have a turn.
Can I address that, though? Many times, though, it's date-dependent. So that I am now turning people away for dates in September, October, even next April already, because those dates are booked. So sometimes it's not just the event that I'm interested in, it's a specific date. And unfortunately, I know you can't add Saturdays into a month.
Before Mr. Martin starts, I think you've already answered it. I was going to ask you, $3,500 for advertising. I was going to ask you if you felt you needed more money for advertising, but I think the word's out, and the advertising's already taken place.
And many of the people with whom I work on a daily basis, from caterers to wedding planners, other event planners, they help tremendously. So when people come to them and say, "I'm interested in having a family reunion," or "I want to have a bridal shower," where would you go if you were going to do something like that? And now we've certainly moved up the list.
Your contacts are protecting you. Credit card fees, there's nothing you can do about that?
And more people come through the pier house, more credit cards we.
Those credit card fees also is paying for the software and the hardware that we have up there at the pier, so it's built into them.
And when that number goes up, that means revenue went up.
Yes, sir. I want that, if that number's going up, things are good.
Very few people carry cash.
Mark, tell them all to hurry. It's your turn. It's Mark's turn.
It is Mark's turn.
He's waiting patiently.
Mr. Martin.
Well, Councilmember Kraft, you certainly touched on the topic that I wanted to talk about, but I'm going to expand the conversation. So you're running a small surplus this year. Great news. You're, even though it's a surplus, you're very close to spending your allocated money, so thank you for that. However, to add on to Councilmember Kraft's conversation, it looks like we're projected to spend a little less in our advertising budget than we had projected for this fiscal year. So I'd certainly encourage you to maximize that budget and spend as much advertising as you can. Secondly, to Mr. Kraft's point, do we need to increase the advertising budget? It sounded like you're doing a great job of networking, and the word is getting out, but since you are running a little bit of a surplus, you know, maybe consider increasing your advertising budget. But more importantly, what I'd like to understand is, do we track where the leads are coming from? So we're spending money on advertising. Your line item says expos and ads in the State Port Pilot and visitor guides and regional publications. Do we track statistically when we do get a lead? Do we say, "Hey, how did you hear about us?" So what's more effective? Is the visitor guides driving it? Is it more word of mouth through the expos that we're participating in? And I bring this up because earlier this year, my wife and I were in Wilmington at a new dress boutique that opened up late last year, and they do a lot of consignment-type business, people who may be looking for a more affordable attire for their wedding. They actually have a display case where we could essentially have some of our literature there. The owner of that boutique mentioned that right now, she's just referring people to Wrightsville Beach. People are coming back to her shop, saying Wrightsville Beach is far too expensive. Is there a lower-cost alternative? She doesn't have an answer for them right now. So I'd really like to get the word out even more. Like, are we pushing our event center into some of these boutique shops? Businesses are reopening. Business owners who want to come online for the first time may be trying to engage in this marketplace around special events. So, and are there other publications aside from the local State Port Pilot? We have visitors that come from all over North Carolina and from out of state. So I guess the question is, are we tracking how we're generating these leads so we're spending our advertising effectively? And then the next question would be, can we spend more in advertising and reach, you know, publications further away from just the local State Port Pilot to drive that pipeline, if you want to say, of people interested in the center?
Obviously, good question. Yes, I do track how people hear about us. I will tell you that it's mostly Google searches right now, web searches. It would be nice if we could buy some ads. We're not to the point where we qualify to be on The Knot, which is the premium wedding site. We've just not been open long enough. So I'm, but it would be great to be able to buy some web advertising. As far as reaching out, I had planned to go to several expos, then COVID hit. Most of them have been canceled or postponed. The next one that I'm scheduled to go to is in September of this year, so I'll be able to start tracking how many people that are in Raleigh are interested in destination weddings and at the beach. So many people who, though, are searching are just doing Google searches. That's how, if they're not local, that's how they're finding us.
So should we look at increasing your advertising budget? And I understand that there's a site that maybe we're not eligible to participate on, but for example, Google searches, we can pay money to move up the search list, right? That's how these search engines work, is you throw some money at them, and all of a sudden, you go from number 20 to number 2 on the list, so.
Yeah, certainly. Though we need to realize that the advertising budget is for the pier and for 801. If you're just focused on 801, that's completely different, because I do do some advertising for the pier. We have people, Fisherman's Post, obviously just for fishermen. It's a widely circulated piece. This is the first year that I've advertised in Fisherman's Post, and I can tell you that people are reading that and coming to the pier. They have no interest and really don't care about it, 801. So when I look at the budget, I have to focus on both components, not just 801.
Okay, that's fair enough. But you bring up an excellent point, and it's the last point on my list, and that's cross-pollinating, I call it, or bundling, right? Have you ever considered driving more traffic across Oak Island amenities through either cross-pollination of a value message? So for example, people are reaching out and they're reading the advertising to come to the pier to fish, and while they may not have had any knowledge of the 801 Center, it is literally right next door. So if there could be some little catchphrase on there, pardon the pun, but you see where I'm going with this, that says, "You may be here to fish, but did you know, you know, right next door to you," I mean, these people may have friends or relatives that are maybe in the process of some special event, and yeah, they're there to fish, but they need to be aware that there's another facility right next door to where they're enjoying. And then as far as bundling goes, be creative. Like, is there an opportunity, if someone is scheduled a special event at the 801 Center, should we throw in, you know, five rounds of golf at the par three, right, as a freebie because they're booking, they want to book an event at the 801? That's what I mean by kind of cross-pollinating and bundling. How do we encourage exposure of more of our amenities? And I know you're not responsible for the par three, but if you're driving traffic to the pier into 801, if there's a way to increase awareness to other amenities within the town, I think that would be a great idea. I don't expect you to have the answer today. It's just something I want to put on the, on your mind and on the table for you to look at going forward. That's it.
So we do have information about 801 at the pier, and when people ask, are staff members who are there and really focused on selling fishing passes and, you know, bait and tackle, they will find me or give someone a tour of the facility. So we do that on a pretty regular basis. So it's not as though they're two distinct facilities.
Excellent.
I think my colleague has some very good ideas. I'd like, however, to see them enacted as part of the financial plan. I'd like to see an advertising campaign. I think that that's what we need. I, too, would support an increase in the advertising budget, especially given the demonstrated success that we have finally. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not an advertising person, but I would think it would be multimedia, and based on what you said, it would be more than wedding exposes, because you really are now set up to handle a variety of events, so.
And I have thought on many occasions about billboards on 17.
There you go.
Yes.
Or on, because the traffic, if you look at the traffic information for 17, increasing yearly over the last five years, I have looked at that, and the cost of billboards is relatively inexpensive as compared to other forms of advertising.
That's why we need to see a plan so we can give you increased funding. And so if the ROI on that is high and the cost is relatively low, that makes perfect sense, right?
Along those lines, and I always sing your praises of how great of a job you've done over there. You took it from zero to quite respectable. Last year, $55,000 in pier house repairs and $20,000 in 801 building repairs. If by chance, and we're projecting those very same numbers for this coming year, $55,000 and $20,000, if by chance we could lower that a tad, we could rob Peter and pay Paul.
David's second said no.
Yeah, we'll probably come back and spend more than that.
That's my.
We still have something new this year that we're going to be doing on the other side. So there's things that we budget for each year, and we hopefully the floor don't fall out in her place. There's a hump there that we need to address and some pilings underneath her structure.
Okay.
So we do share the money between the two, pier house, if 801, air conditioners or whatever, we do, or Hatton has the ability to transfer in her local monies between this.
But to find additional advertising money, we're not going to be able to find it in there, from those two line items.
If you wanted to say that you wanted to add another $1,500 to it, we can always find small amounts of monies within the budgets to be able to transfer something over. But I would say let Lisa go back and look at that and see what she can bring forward. Once you pass the budget, there's always amendments or anything that we need to do to fix a section, and then she could bring back a plan if she needed to do additional advertising here or there, the Google or whatever it is, but just give her some time to evaluate it, and if we need to raise it up, then we'll do a transfer and give her the appropriate funds.
Sounds good to me.
Lisa, I know we pay a considerable amount of money to Brunswick County and eventually the state as it passes through in tourism dollars. Do we reap any benefit or have any input as to how those tourism dollars are used relative to Oak Island?
We are not, I mean, we are not utilizing any of those funds in this department.
No, not those funds. We're, I understand.
All that goes into tourism dollars, whatever spent's spent. Our accommodation tax is what we have on that side. We don't, we do not have a campaign to figure out how many dollars everyone spends here on the beach.
No, no, no. Not my question. I'm sorry. I didn't say it succinctly. How do we benefit, or is there an opportunity to promote the 801 Center, working with Brunswick County Tourism, to promote the pier complex, the 801 Center, et cetera? So I'm not sure what we get from the monies that pass through to them, and is there an opportunity to ask for support at that level?
Yeah, we had them, we had her come in, make a presentation to council.
I remember that.
Last year. We're still trying to figure out what she came and told us. But they haven't broke down on what they spend in Oak Island, what they spend in Southport. We asked for that information. Lisa even sent a reminder to her, but they have not dispersed any of those line item kind of funds, what each municipality gets out of it.
We do appear, 801 is on there on the website as a potential venue for special events.
Okay, cool.
And I've provided text and photos and.
Thank you.
As far as you know, in the North Carolina Magazine, she's not, that department is not advertising our complex.
Seen anything, and she's not asked for anything. Oak Island's the black sheep.
Yeah, there was a beaches of Brunswick County Magazine that came out, and Oak Island wasn't even in it. I thought that was really curious.
Well, and that's actually how I came to get information on their website, is that I saw something and we weren't included, so I just called, and she said, "We'd be happy to have you." To send me this, this, and this.
Excellent. Thank you for that. What do you need from us?
Nothing. Any other questions for her?
You need a nod?
No. Again, kudos.
Yes.
I asked an earlier.
I'd just say thank you to my staff and to the folks sitting here.
Kudos to your entire staff.
Scott's group. I mean, we couldn't be where we are without them.
I asked an earlier group that came in, is there anything else that you wish we understood or knew? I want to help you if I can. Is there anything else you need us to know?
I know something. In the morning or evening, if you would like to bag ice, you can stop by, you can stop by and bag ice that we sell at the pier.
Yeah, we're now selling rather than buying.
You're close to there, too, aren't you, Bill?
No, I don't live that close. I moved last week. If I did live close, I would.
I see you walking. I know you both are.
In other words, David thinks everything's okay.
I mean, she came to us the other day and started telling us about her bagging ice, and as Sheila brought to it, she does everything.
Yeah.
And we're trying to get her some help, because I think we're going to go up on ice to $5. The more she goes up, the more we sell, so we'll have to see how that works out.
What we're making on ice.
Good ice.
Good deal. If I can answer your question, there are two things. One, I think to pay attention to the condition and the age of 801. It's a historic building on the island. It's got a great history to it. People recognize it from generations ago and everything it's been. But as we all age, we know things change and things happen, and we just need to pay attention to some of the things that a building needs. And I do think there is an opportunity to enhance the exterior of the building a little bit, so as you drive by, it's.
Sticks out.
Well, and it's just, people want to get married there. If you look at it sometimes, it's like, I can tell when people drive up that it's just not glamorous.
Do you have an idea what that, what that would be?
No, I'd have.
Aesthetically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scott's group and, you know, landscape architecture, architects and things like that.
So when I have visitors and we drive by the pier or we go to the pier, and they see 801, and they go, "What's that?" So sometimes when you, there are buildings that have a tagline or something underneath, or there's a sign that replicates the 801 and, and a little tagline that helps you to somehow characterizes what it represents and what it is. Have you thought maybe about that?
I have thought about it.
Excellent. I'm sure you have.
And even murals on the one side of the building. We could do a mural on the east side, so as you're walking up the pier, you look at rather than this massive building that has nothing but trash cans and air conditioning units on the side, you could really dress up that east side.
Brunswick County Arts.
Can you paint, Scott?
That goes in line with what we've talked about on some of our local artists and what have you.
You're in luck, Linda. We just approved, well, haven't approved yet, we put in this upcoming budget, special projects around art, and one of those special projects is wall murals on exterior buildings. And so we're fortunate that Mr. Emery has had some experience in the past of supervising some of those projects in other municipalities, so we're going to be kicking that off. We're excited about it. So the 801 Center certainly can be added to the list for, to get some art. I'd actually like to see the art turned into those selfie tours that you see now popping up and are very popular, where people take a selfie at every building, and they come by town hall, and they get a sticker or a T-shirt or something. So that's our goal, is to start driving local artists in our community to beautify some areas. I would also add to your comment about the exterior of the building is to think about ways to incorporate a more permanent outdoor extension to what the events bring. I know we've got some overhangs and things like that that are utilized, but is there any, any way to enhance the experience by something more permanent on the exterior of the building, to use a space, right?
Some of the things that we've talked about, I know, are not permitted because of the location of the building, so we just have to think about what.
Right. We can always go up, right? I don't think we're at the 41-foot height yet.
Well, we've looked at that structure, and we have a water problem. Lisa's got her fingers crossed now for the next three days, and it does flood, and we have the stormwater, you know. I think we did the 90% meeting with the contractor the other day to get that going. We're waiting to see if we get that big grant in, into June, and then we'll see where we're going to go, so we're going to try to take care of some of her water problem. We had EB go in and take a look about raising the interior. Uh, we had EB go in and take a look about raising the interior, the floor up one foot. And Lisa's always looked, we have a wall, we have the bathrooms, we have that. She wants to reconstruct the inside as well. So when we do that, then we would just raise the exterior doors, the windows would stay where they are. Um, we'd put a new floor in, you'd fill it full of sand, you pour the floor into the concrete, but she could change her plumbing and move her bathrooms to where she wants her bathrooms. And then she can reconfigure things and she's got that big old kitchen and she's got extra area and she wants to be able to utilize other areas. So um, at that time, and, and we were gonna bring that back to you at the retreat come January. For you to start looking at that for next year. Because that's something that we need to do, but we wanted to see what this first stormwater plan did to the water first. And if it fixed it, then we didn't need to do these other things. But then we would still had to look at changing the interior of her building. She has a staff member that's been doing painting, carpentry work, uh, and other kind of things inside and continues to do those things. But on the long goal, we looked at what we were gonna do. We looked at the pier itself. We built a new pier. We got the old restaurant and we got the old tackle shop. We had always looked at where we were gonna build another pier, house and restaurant. Uh, we cannot build it in the same footprint because Cameron will have to move it back. Parking lot can be in the front, building in the back. So we looked at what Lisa's needs were. We need to separate the tackle shop from the restaurant. We need to give her more storage space. There's all kinds of things she needs. And so we're gonna have to look at that. And then what do we do with eight oh one? Um, they had looked at doing the second floor at the new restaurant as eight oh one. And then you would have the catering, you'd have a kitchen, you'd, you'd work it all together. Um, and then eight oh one would be parking. So we gotta look at the whole complex of how we want to develop that. But at the same time, we need to utilize it to make as much money off of it as we can.
Right. Yeah, I recently attended a wedding at a venue that was built specifically for, for weddings. I mean, that's the driving business model at this venue that I attended. And they had a neat concept where um, it was a very open model, similar to what we have now at eight oh one. But then in one end of the building, like over our kitchen, there was like an open air, kinda like balcony concept. But on the wings, there were dressing lounges. So the bride had one side and the groom had the other side. It allowed them and their parties to go in there, change their clothes, you know, prep their hair, get ready for the event, you know, down below. And the staircase was open, right? So you could see, literally see the wedding party come down the stairs out into the venue. It was a really cool concept. So um, you know, certainly sounds like there's other designs in the works. That's great. I don't know if it's feasible to keep eight oh one where it is and maybe look at some sort of half story addition to create these lounges or.
We do have a bridal dressing area and a grooms area.
Local.
And I would say the bridal dressing area is sometimes the thing that actually changes somebody's mind. When you, you can just tell when a bride walks in and she will look around and say, you mean I get to use this room? It's a done deal at that point.
Great.
Excellent.
For the groom too. So if you've not seen those spaces, I'll be happy to show.
Yeah, I haven't seen those spaces.
Yeah.
Before we commit to major renovations and additional costs, I think we really need to maximize the current situation. Make it as efficient as possible and as cosmetically pleasing as possible before we spend money raising buildings or building things off it. Toward that point, pardon me, um, we do have money, as Councilman Martin mentioned and Councilman Kraft, for murals. We also have money for a sculpture project. And perhaps we can enlist one of our local architects to, on a pro bono basis, take a look at the front of the building and say, what could we do cosmetically that would make it stand out without spending a ton of money? And I'm sure there are some ideas that we might generate. So those kind of approaches first before we start reconstructing this building. Because then all the work that we've done moving towards break even profit is gonna be put in arrears. So.
When we purchased the property, we knew, then we laid out a three to five year plan on what we were gonna do with the structures.
Yeah, exactly.
One last question, if I may. Uh, I know there's no parking signs right there in front of your building. And every day there's cars parked right there in front of your building. Is that something that we need to enforce more so? Or is it a situation, as long as you have a place to park your car, uh, the other parking places are not that necessary?
That's, it's really not about me. It's about the people who rent that space. I um, like for the next three days, we've got three different weddings. I wanna make sure that the people who have rented the facility have access to those spaces that are out there. That's the challenge that.
Are you able to put cones out, saving it for them?
I do. I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But that doesn't mean that somebody who wants to get a cup of coffee at Ruby's will, you know, move the cone. And it happens every weekend, so.
Again, great work. If there are no more questions, let's move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Next we have a familiar face. Scott. Well, his last one. Um, and this shouldn't be that bad. Par three golf course, if you'll turn to section thirty eight, it is also a pink tab. Excuse me. Thank you, ma'am. Bill's gonna come by and bag ice.
I only lived in that area.
If we came, she wouldn't let us.
I know.
Aren't you right across the street? Okay, alright. Go bag ice, Bill.
Everybody good? Well, we're getting started. Um, Mr. Hatton, anything interesting you'd like to say about this one?
Not at this time. I, I don't know what to say about the golf course. I mean, it is in much better shape than it has been for the last couple of years. And you can see from the revenue, it's, it's all weather related, obviously, but I mean, the people coming through and playing golf has increased a little bit. The memberships, as you can see, we budgeted twenty three thousand and as of, we think it's gonna be about twenty seven thousand. So it has picked up our memberships. But you know, if, as we pick up revenue in this golf course, you know, expenses just continue. It's not cheap to operate a golf course as we have found out. I don't know what else I can say.
The gift that keeps on giving.
And then we did a lease program. Um, you can go ahead and turn to the next page, five oh one. Um, but we did a lease program for equipment, uh, for the grounds maintenance part last year. And as you know, COVID sort of set different companies back. Toro's had problems getting us the equipment. Uh, I think we've rewritten the lease agreement probably five or six times this year.
I got another one today to redo.
They have about five pieces, I think it is now, ready to come to us. Um, so we are gonna get some of that. So Jonathan's had to continue to use the stuff that we were getting rid of two years ago. So we still are spending money on those kind of things, but the, hopefully this will be the last time and we can see some equipment coming to help Jonathan and start to maintain the golf course.
I'll add on the capital out there. You can see that the money that we had budgeted was for this equipment lease. But I think we're gonna spend approximately eleven thousand five hundred and this is for a grinder. It was, it's a used grinder from Bald Head Island that he can, he has got a chance to get if we purchase it fairly soon. So I will come with a budget amendment to spend eleven thousand five hundred for the grinder. He tells me, Scott, if I explain it better than I can, the grinder will save us money and we will probably pay for itself in the next three years. It, so it goes in and sharpens all the blades for every single different piece of equipment that they have up there. It's like three hundred dollars, six hundred dollars a blade, just for one blade.
It's about a two thousand dollar one time thing and we have to do it two to four times a year. So. Get this pen. This is a very well-used piece of equip, I mean, very soft used piece of equipment just coming from Bald Head. And brand new, that's almost a forty thousand dollar piece of equipment.
That's why he said, hey, if we didn't buy a brand new one, it's fifty thousand dollars. It's the basic one.
So instead of shipping this out to get, we'll do it in-house?
Yes.
Yes.
At two thousand dollars, a savings each time.
So we're looking at ways to save money up there as much as we can.
So on the lease amount that, Mr. Martin, the thirty three thousand eight oh four, we probably won't spend that because we don't have that. But um, hopefully we get those five pieces. They may, I doubt they invoice us until after July, so that'll be next year. So we'll just continue. The three-year lease will be now twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six.
If I can ask Scott, each time I talk to somebody about the golf course, they tell me just how rough the, the greens are. And then the next sentence is they're taking all these steps to build the greens back. When are they gonna be able to have puttable greens?
Some of them are good. There's some that aren't. I mean, there's some that we're struggling with. One of the things we're gonna do upcoming, we'll have the irrigation system reevaluated because that's been a lot of the issues through the past years.
That for the greens or for the, for the ponds, the irrigation?
Well, it comes from the ponds, but it irrigates the entire course and we've had problems with the pump and, I mean, it's all working now, but we need to reevaluate and see if it's time to invest in new technology. Also gonna look at, we had it sprigged maybe two years ago and it just didn't, didn't take. I mean, I hated that because that was like a thirty thousand dollar sprigging job we did. So I've got Jonathan looking at the possibility of what it costs to sod each green properly. So, but we can't. I don't wanna do that until we're sure the irrigation system's right. So I don't wanna spend the money on that and it's not be able to water it properly. So.
So um, as a member of the course and also former committee member, this is, as Mr. Hatton said, a very difficult proposition. Golf courses are overbuilt and struggling, et cetera, et cetera, and they're high cost. That's systemic. They're just built into running a golf course. All that being said, we need to do a couple of things. One, I think we need to set a goal of reducing this deficit. And to do that, we need a golf course that's in, not just playable condition, but that's attractive. Then we need a membership drive, right? You can see the falloff. It was probably COVID related. The amount of subscriptions fell. The condition of the course deteriorated and so we've landed where we are. And now that we have an economic development person capacity coming in, this is all about advertising. This is about getting it into the hands of every visitor. The par threes are unique. These executive courses are rare and the ones that are in tip-top condition are attractive. And we would attract people if we had a course that they wanted to play if they knew it was there, kind of thing. Um, so there's a lot of work to be done here. I don't think we're ever gonna make money on a golf course. It was a mistake. But we can cut this deficit and we can do better. I mean, that's the issue. Without more membership and greater number of rounds, you've got nowhere to go. So we have to invest in that. And we've never really done that. The budget is, what, a thousand dollars for advertising for the par three?
We up to two thousand.
Okay. It's clearly not enough. It's not working and we need a membership drive. So put simply, we need a strategy here. Rather than just throwing money at this, we, we need to get the course in playable condition, advertise it and make it attractive to be a member. Part of that, um, I'll tread lightly on the ground that, and we need to think about um, renovating the clubhouse. We need to talk to the HOAs in South Harbor about selling alcohol on a limited basis. That'll bump your profit. How we do that without offending them and changing their neighborhood, that's a long, complicated discussion, but it can be done. Build a patio there. We can begin to structure events, tournaments. We have some of that. We could do more, you know, et cetera. But again, I'll just end with, we need a plan to reduce this deficit. We can't, otherwise these numbers are just gonna be these numbers. And we're, as Sheila said, we, this is the uh.
That keeps on giving.
Thank you. There you go.
Kinda like the sewer. Thank you. I agree with Councilman Bach. We need a plan. But I would also think the first thing we need is to get the golf course presentable where people would wanna join as members. We can advertise and, and go out looking for members and have incentives and have seminars and what have you, but if the course is not attractive to play on. They're not gonna come back. They're not gonna come back. So for two or three years, we've been trying everything and I know that sometimes you try the best approach and it doesn't work and.
And I think now, I, I think it's moving in that direction now. We've got Jonathan on board. He's, he's been a really good asset to the golf course out there. He's really knowledgeable. So he's, he's moving things forward. It's just a.
Can he give you an idea as to when he thinks his greens uh, will be?
He's hoping that what he's doing through the spring will improve. I don't know if they'll be perfect, but by summer, I hope they'll look much better.
I mean, I, I lowered my head when I asked a fellow one time, how, how do you play the course? And he said, if I'm eight feet from the hole and there's too many ridges and holes and, and I can't putt to the hole, I move my ball to the left eight feet away. And I thought, that's a tough way to pay to play golf. So we gotta get that better to give him a fighting chance.
The new equipment, once it finally gets in, will help also because like I say, we're kinda piecemealing stuff together. Sometimes we may use a mower that's not specifically designed for that function or so. Like I say, I think it's moving in that direction. It's just.
So Councilman Bach, do you think, once it, once the greens get presentable, the advisory board needs to come up with a game plan to, to market it or?
Yes, well, that, that group in conjunction with our economic development person, yes, we need to figure out how we do that. But you're, you're quite right, uh, uh, Councilman Kraft. Like hole number four, which is dirt, it's not, we're not gonna get anybody to come and play that. The uniqueness of the par three is it's, it's basically a short game. I mean, I don't hit more than a nine iron except for one hole. So if the greens aren't in good shape, there's no fun, there's no attraction. If they're in good shape, what you have is a walkable course, a course that's multi-generational. I mean, a seven-year-old can play it. It's not that hard. Uh, that lends itself to families. It's quick. It's not four hours. You're not waiting. It moves. And people who wanna rent carts, that, there's another profit area we could have. But you're right, it all pivots around the condition of the course. If it doesn't look good or the word of mouth is unfortunately negative, it's a tough sell. It just is. There, you're right. There, I would say there, there are three holes that are really unplayable and just go around them. They're not worth playing. You're hitting into sand and you know, it's ridiculous. You wanna see a green target. The course was in great shape three or four years ago. Membership was, was increasing and then the pandemic hit and it stopped. We changed superintendents and that's been another problem. So, yes, I concur. Sorry, it'd be a long winded. Yes, get the course in good shape and then figure out how we can reduce the deficit. Absolutely.
I'm optimistic that that will happen. Um, I know how hard y'all work in that regard. I think it's also important that um, we as council have um, kinda do some level setting for expectations for the golf course. I don't know that it'll ever be a great moneymaker. Uh, we don't make money specifically off of Middleton Park. We don't make money off of Veterans Park. We don't make money, you know, of, out of other facilities. But it is um, uh, and can be a great attraction for the island. Especially in line with, I think, what Councilman Martin, you had said about wanting Oak Island to be a recreation destination. So I don't know that it will ever make money, but I think, Mr. Bach, with your notion of reducing the deficit and even moving a lot closer to break even would be, would be a, a good goal.
In brief, I would like to say I have an unusual view of things. And I've talked to Jonathan about it and, and he's explained and I've all talked, talked to other people of golf courses out of state and they tell me the same thing. When you go to redo it, it takes about three years to get everything back up to where it needs to be. So you have to be very patient with it. Um, and the other thing I would say is that uh, I'm sorry, but. I'm sorry, but play is getting worse. I have more golf balls under my house and on my porch than I ever had before. So I would suggest that we give golf lessons, and it would be of an asset for me, anyway.
You could set up a stand and sell those back.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to, was asking. I never got an answer. And I'm not being funny. This is true. Can we sell beer there? Can we sell beer at the clubhouse?
We can with the HOA's approval.
And have you ever asked them?
We've asked in general, but we have never gone in front of their master board.
Okay. Because I get a lot of feedback from the guys that I know that play there. It would be really nice if we could go back to the clubhouse, sit around, have a beer, talk, and, you know, lie to each, one guy said, lie to each other about how good we are. But I think that's something to look at, but I don't know how you go about that.
When they, when we talked to a few of them before, they, right now, they rent us that one room, or don't rent us. They don't rent it anymore. They give it to us. That one room. Well, we would have to then go get more room from them, like the little kitchen area or something to be able to, and then they were asking if we were going to have outside seating, or are we going to do, so we'd have to devise what we were wanting to do. We're going to have a beer cart riding around selling beer. As John put it, it's nine, you know, nine holes your back an hour later. So I don't know if we need a golf cart riding around selling beer. But we just have to look at a few things to, if they would allow us somewhere they would accommodate us to be able to put the beer sales in.
Thank you.
If you still have beer, maybe you can have less golf balls in your yard.
No, you'd have more.
You have more?
You won't care.
Just, just for the record, on more than one occasion, I have made par from Charlie's yard. So it is possible.
At my house the other day, and he's, he looks up and he sees me coming, and he goes, hi there. I said, how are you? He said, I'm fine. I said, that's my golf ball. But I get, I get that all the time. It's really, it's, and what I think Mr. Bach said about the multi-generational, it is fantastic, because I see little kids out there all the time playing, and that's, that's very encouraging.
But if we can generate some income, if we could have that meeting with the HOA, that might offset some of the losses and overhead.
Leasing sells quite a bit of beer at the pier.
Mr. Martin?
I would just, I certainly agree with all the conversations to date. I would just add to what Councilmember Bach brought up. I think it's more than just establishing a goal to reduce the deficit. I'd really like to have a discussion on a long-range plan with what we're exactly, what's the intent? We have a lease in place through a certain point in time, you know, it may be another 10 years away. But we've already heard topics that, we have irrigation. The irrigation may not be optimal, so there may be some changes there. Charlie just stated that it takes three years if you want to see, you know, some sort of progress in the greens or other plantings or upkeep. That's a longer path. So we're on a long path here, even to reduce the deficit. So the next 10 years is going to go by very quickly. And I'd rather start the conversation now instead of later on what is our intent? Are we going to renew the lease when it comes up? Are we going to get the golf course in a condition to be sold to private individuals who will run it as a for-profit golf course? I mean, what is our intent with the golf?
I don't think we have a lease, do we?
No, we own it.
Own it.
Right now, we just have to keep it as a par three golf course.
However many years. The deed until 2035.
2035. So there's some end date of an obligation for us. So 2035 will be upon us in terms of, you know, working with a golf course fairly quickly. So I'd like to have a conversation, perhaps at the next retreat in 2023, around, let's make some hard decisions on where, where we're going with this thing. You know, short-term, we can certainly do everything to reduce the deficit, but long-term, what's the end goal here? Are we, do we want to keep it? Do we want to maintain it? Do we want to, you know, turn it over into private sector business? What do we want to do? So...
I mean, I think we could look now at having someone come in and take it over for us and run it for us and those kind of things. And we had talked about it before, but we were never serious about going after that. We could put out RFP or RFQ to get, see if anybody is interested in running or taking over a par three, leave it as a par three, and then let the third party take care of it and handle it and keep it green and, and those kind of things, instead of us taking it out of general fund to boost the dollar.
Did actually do that one time, at least once before. But the proposals that we got were not.
They all wanted to be able to sell beer.
But we might be able to rectify that situation if we can meet with them.
Well, I think long-term planning is always good. So I certainly would support having that conversation. The near-term problem is cutting the deficit and getting the course right. Because frankly, except for this crazy housing market, it's hard to sell a house that needs work in disrepair and who's, you know, the driveway's damaged. That's what we're, if we tried to sell it now, that's what you're looking at. Nobody's going to buy it. They can't turn a profit. They can't sell alcohol. They can't get the rounds, et cetera. But should we have a long-term conversation? Yeah. And let's, let's have a goal, whether it's five years out or six years out, that makes sense. Let's put the effort and the money where it needs to be. Right now, we're just playing catch-up.
Right. Either the par three fits into the long-range goal for a recreation destination for Oak Island, or it doesn't. So if it doesn't fit into a long-range plan for recreation here, then what do we have to do to prepare the course so it is no longer part of that, the piece of the puzzle? If it does fit, then, you know, I like the concept of maybe at least trying to see if the maintenance could be outsourced on it, so we're not having to continually transfer general fund money to, to hold it. Sure. Right?
So, you know, turn that on its head for a moment, because we're looking at the downside of the, the issue here. You have boating, fishing, surfing, parks. You have a par three course. I mean, that's, that is unique and could be, if marketed correctly, in good shape, right? Could be a reason to come here. But, so if that's the goal, we've got five years of work. I'm not saying it is, but that's the, I think where you want to take the discussion, and I agree. We, but we have to be serious about it. We can't just slap something together.
That's correct.
When, one of our goals, retreat goals, was to determine exactly what we need to do to the course to make it more viable, more playable. So to be able to at least, pre-next retreat, to figure that out. Scott, if you could help us do that, what, what do we need to optimize the course in terms of playability? And what are we looking at timeline? I think would help us, then the assumptions council would be able to make regarding playability, could build a plan on top of that.
Bottom line, though, we have to get the greens playable before we can get excited about any other thoughts.
Any other questions, comments?
The second part of this is, one more page, 738. It's a very quick one. And in the back of that, the section you were just in was the mileage and equipment and everything in the back of that book. Operation side of it, we have seven pro shop, golf shop attendees. The ladies handle it well over there. We added one more, just to try to get a little more rotation so they didn't have to work as many hours. They have been there, some of them's been there five years, some of them, one of them's been there eight years. So they have some time put into this. And I think this where Mr. Hatton was gracious. I think you said you gave them $2,000 here. And so we'll look at the advertising here as well. And once the committee gets up and running, maybe next month, you can appoint some more people to fill it now that we've changed sort of the requirements for that and try to get something going. Did you see the credit card fees on this, too?
The credit card fees is also the software and hardware that I installed up there this year. We did not have a very good system whatsoever. It was hard to tell anything about it. So, and we did it all, installed this system. And now we can say, you can tell if somebody's playing nine holes, if they're playing 18 holes, what they have purchased, and if they're on a cart, or a pull cart, riding cart, what have you. And we did not have that before. So I think that's helped us also. Also, the fees, you know, we're in a, as we've talked about, the golf course, you know, if we raise fees, do we take ourselves out of the market completely for nine holes? You know, so it's kind of a dilemma. But we did simplify the fees over the last couple of years. I mean, this is for an example. If you go in on Tuesday morning and you were an Oak Island resident, and you were a certain age, you get to play for this price. But if you bought your buddy in and he lived on the mainland, he couldn't get that discount. It was so convoluted. It was, I mean, it had to be this long, the ladies were, they would always have to look. I mean, y'all may have experienced it.
I remember.
So, you know, we got rid of that. And so that's helped. And everything's right on the, it's all where they just push a button, and it gives them the correct price, and it tells us that. Also, merchandise. We completely took out most of all, if not all, of the old merchandise, put in new merchandise, shirts, gloves, hats, balls, golf balls, et cetera, because it'd been years, and it's the same stuff was just hanging up there, and people was not buying it. It was kind of neglected. I mean, I picked up, when I went up and did inventory, I picked up a couple of golf gloves, and they were so dry-rotted, they fell apart on my hand. And that's what we were trying to sell. So we've revamped all that, and I anticipate that this summer, we will see the benefits of that.
And rearrange the pro shop to where the merchandise is more visual and accessible.
Last year, we changed it from the rec department handling this to Scott or Jonathan being able to handle it since he was right there. So now I think the ladies of the clubhouse, they appreciate him there on a daily basis, because now they can tell if he's spraying fertilizer. They know to tell the people, hey, this hole was closed, or that hole's closed. And the working relationship with them is, is good. Now we just got to get the rec department to work with Jonathan about getting some tournaments and stuff back out there. Jonathan's got some ideas that he's wanting to do. There used to be tournaments out there on, or little afternoon Tuesdays and mornings on Thursdays and those kind of things. And he's trying to get those back. But again, he's got a few greens that are still in sad shape. So he's trying to get all those things together.
What's the status of a sign on Long Beach Road? So we don't, people don't even know that it's back, that it's stuck back there.
DOT, when we put the sign out there on the road, that nobody got a permit for it the first time. So that was removed. And then we wanted to put a sign back. And where they wanted us to put the sign is back there near the entrance to, on Vanessa Drive. So then we were looking at the location they were wanting us to put it at, and then you weren't going to see it from the roadway. So we've sort of let them put the sandwich sign. We've, we've done things. We've put a sign over at Howie's place. We just moved temporary signs around to advertise the site.
Right. So there's no opportunity to put?
Oh, you can put a sign, but you go put it at the entrance to Vanessa Drive. They're not going to allow us to put it there at the airport.
They're not going to let us put it at the airport.
So our best-case scenario, they'll see it as they drive down the road, approaching the bridge, and maybe next time they come down, they'll say, by the way, there's a golf course over there.
Now, the, the ladies keep putting the sandwich signs out there. DOT every now and then takes it up from us, and we make another one and put it back out. But there is some signs saying the par three. Now, the location they allowed us to put where we couldn't fit it was at Fish Factory Road there at the red light. And where they told us to put it, the setback and everything from the corner, it wouldn't have done us any good there unless you were sitting on Fish Factory, turning onto the road. So we were sort of limited right there.
So I have an off-the-wall idea, but since Councilman Martin is handling the mural part of this, and we have all those corrugated buildings at the airport that are ugly, maybe we should put a mural up for the golf course with an arrow. Right? DOT can't object to that, can they?
No, we, we've already asked Howie that.
What did Howie say?
He's wanting to finish that last structure, and then he was looking to see about, because then we got Steve involved on signs and those kind of things. So, because Howie approached him to see if he could start putting signs on those structures for advertisement. And then, so we asked about the other thing that you said. Could we paint something on there to emphasize the golf course? And Howie wants to finish the building that he's building now, then he's going to probably bring back a tax amendment or something for us to look at about painting or putting something on the end of those buildings to make them more attractive.
Fair enough. He wants advertising. I aesthetically would like to improve it, and maybe we can meet in the middle, especially since we're a contributor to the airport's fund balance. Right? That's win-win. So...
Put that in the plan.
Well, we'll see.
Having heard the last two or three discussions, I think we might need to get our mural and artists have a, have a meeting in the next couple of months to see what we can start putting on some of our buildings.
Brunswick County Council of the Arts would very much like to work with Oak Island on any art projects. I may have supplemental funding to support that effort as well. So I think we want to also engage, engage them.
Any other questions for Scott?
Anything else? Thank you very much, Scott, for all you do. And let's move on.
All right. So now we're to the nitty-gritty part. The accommodation tax, Fund 45 and 46, these items are in your book. Basically, what it shows is what we spent to date on the Phase Two project that you see, updates on the revenues that we have come in, if you want to look at those tabs.
What would a penalty consist of? On that tab 45?
If you didn't pay your accommodations tax.
If you didn't pay your tax?
They don't pay it on time.
Got it.
More importantly, I'll just jump right in. How confident are we that we're identifying even the properties that should be paying the accommodation tax? I ask that because I see an increase in the number of people advertising rental property on platforms like Facebook, for example. And they promote in their ads that they are a lower-cost opportunity because they have less fees that they're charging through Facebook versus traditional property management companies. So I have an increasing concern that we may be not collecting the 100% owed for rentals here within the town of Oak Island.
There's, we used to have a, inside of the tax department, it still is inside the tax department. The new tax collector pretty much got her feet wet and got that hopefully running where she can start doing some of the other tasks, or assigning it to the senior person. But that is something we review and we continue to review, but we had not reviewed it since last year. So it is time again to start looking at those. The estimated revenue increases that you see, either those are the extended stay, I mean, we're getting more people visiting through the year, or we're picking up more customers. But it is time to go back and take a look to see how we can, the new little gadgets and technologies that you can go find these people. We get advertisements from different companies, you know, they want a percentage. They say, we'll go find it, but we would like 10%. Or it's not a small number that they want to be able to go find these. So it's time for us to go back internally and talk with the tax department or Hatton's people to see who they can assign to do this. We had an individual that did that for two years and got everything caught back up. And it is probably time to do that because we haven't done it through the pandemic.
Four years ago, we did an education.
I was getting ready to say. Go ahead.
And we had a lot of people went, okay, finally got caught. And then we had some... And we had a lot of people went, okay, finally got caught. And then we had some that said, I didn't know I even had to do it. Some of them went so far, there wasn't many of them, but said, I didn't pay for the last year either. So I'll do the right thing. I'll pay it up. Again, there wasn't many of those, but there was some that says, okay.
The, the campaign brought in, I don't remember exactly the increase that year. But also Airbnb and vacation rent by owner have also started charging tho, those accommodations fees. And don't they actually?
They send us.
I mean, they, they charge, but then they, they give it to the town. I mean,
Then they remit it to the town.
Remit. That's my word I'm looking for. Yes.
That's been a very big, very helpful to us over the last couple of years.
And some of those.
We were at the mercy of lots and lots of people who are now forced to.
Are we still at the mercy?
Well, as Mr. Martin said, you, there's probably people out there that are not remitting it.
As a, as a retired tax collector, I assure you, the ones that you see that I see, get sent to the tax office.
Well, also, it's surprising.
I have her own speed email.
How many people will call the tax office and says, my neighbor has been renting their place. Are they?
Paying, right.
I've paid it religiously for the last ever.
There is also.
And it's amazing how many people turn other people in.
When new, new owners come in, um, to change their water service and that sort of thing. We had, and I'm not sure if it's still on, the newcomer sheet, it'll give you a form that shows you that you're required if you, and you have to sign. Do you still have to sign whether you are or are not renting your own?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So.
I, I was told, don't know if it's accurate or not, that the Airbnbs or the vacation rental by owner send in a one-page form saying, I rented my house for four days. I collected this much money. Here's your part. And we pretty much just have to believe the number that they give us. They say they rented it for two thousand. We hope they did rent it for two thousand. And the truth may be they rented it for three thousand. Uh, do we have no other way to? So we are at their mercy. That's scary.
I think that Airbnb though realizes that, uh, uh, they, they're a pretty legitimate company if, if you've got a legitimate renters or, or owners.
The big companies out here on the island, obviously they know what they're renting for because there are ones that's doing it. So they're remitting on that. So we took those people, the owners of the properties, completely out of the loop. They're paying the better beach or whoever.
Yeah. Yeah, the three or four rental companies, I'm sure that we've got a good relationship with them. But the one, the, the many people who just quietly rent to their friends back home and, what type of penalty do we have when we find out somebody has been not honest with us?
I think it's, isn't it ten dollars a day? It's set by le, by the accommodations legislation.
I can't remember, sir.
Is it ten dollars a day or twenty dollars a day?
Ain't much.
It's not much.
But I can't, I don't remember. We'll waive the penalty if they pay us the other. Just to get.
Yeah. So there's.
Well, I think Councilman Martin is, is raising a good question. I don't think that we're ever going to approach one hundred percent capture. It's just not going to be possible. But we may be at a point where, depending on what your internal review reveals, we might want to talk to several of the agencies who, who take a fee, but are going to guarantee you X amount additional revenue because they've identified people who are evading the tax. And there are municipalities that use that. It's fairly sophisticated. And in a way, knowing that's out there changes behavior, right? Because they know they're going to be monitored. So I think we look at what your internal numbers look like, what your review looks like. And then down the road, that's something we could talk about. And did we just outsource that and we put them on it twenty-four seven and they're monitoring all of these channels? Which is hard to keep up with, right? I think Councilwoman Bell is correct. Airbnb is too big to cheat. They're, they're probably legit. It's these other platforms, these other, uh, advertisements which are flying below the radar that we're not capturing.
And we might be surprised how many there are.
You also have your rental companies that will turn in someone in a minute. Especially if it's someone that they, they had a contract with and were renting. And then all of a sudden, the owner decides they're going to rent themselves.
Yes, that has happened.
Yeah. The rental companies will turn them in in a minute.
Yep, we've had that.
Um, I don't want to be the one to spoil the party, but it's eleven fifteen and we have a ways to go. We've exhausted this. Can we move on?
Roll on, Mary. Roll on.
Um, so then you turn over to the next forty-five, seven forty-five. This is where we pay the beach ambassador, Skip. We pay the beach services people. And then we are adding a part-time, another part-time drone for seasonal, uh, work from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So that person will be assisting. We can't have Sean work every Saturday and Sunday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So this person will step in and take some of those hours, uh, from that as well. But there'll be a seasonal person just through the summer. Um, same equipment, same truck, same everything. Don't need any extra equipment. Don't need extra vehicles. Don't need anything.
Is this an economic decision? Why wouldn't we make the current operator full time? Why are we having two part-time folks?
Because the weekend work that we're going to need for him, I mean, for the police to do the beach thing, I, I reckon you wouldn't mind working from Memorial Day to Labor Day for every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The items that we would need him to do during the week, he wouldn't be here. He'd be working for them. So.
I would put him working seven days a week for June, July.
So we looked at, looking at the part-time because we will not utilize the, this person will not be every weekend. They'll only be the three or four weekends that Sean cannot work. It's not a full, full-time, I mean, full, part-time person.
It's less than a, what, five?
I think we only figured two hundred hours for him.
Okay.
Are we stepping Sean up to forty hours or?
No need.
Is it Thursday, Friday, Saturday or?
He will work, uh, because on the days that he will work for them, it's, uh, two to four hours a day because of battery life and the, and the tides. And the things that we need for him as the summer goes on and the hurricane season starts to pick up is when we start having to do all our mapping and everything for the upcoming season for FEMA to make sure we have everything documented on our side. So those things pick up. As we have interviewed planners yesterday and we talked to them about, uh, use of drone, use of footages and those kind of things, if they had used it where they are currently. Some things you can use a drone for, some you can't. But, uh, because we were trying to see if they would need the person for any additional hours to see if we need to look at bringing him in full time. But the current situation that we have with staff, we don't see where we need him full time.
So it's, it sounds like, and don't leave words in your mouth, the current drone pilot, while that individual would remain on a part-time schedule because there are needs outside of beach services for drone services, we would have some sort of hierarchy where there is a kind of a senior lead drone pilot person who develops protocols and evaluates equipment. And this new part-time drone pilot specifically for beach services only would, would have to follow or not necessarily supervisally report into the lead person. But the lead person would essentially mentor them and make sure they're following protocols and, and, and the approach for proper beach services.
The way we have it laid out now is the permanent part-time will be the lead. And that is what Sean's position is, permanent part-time on an annual basis. And the other person is classified as a seasonal part-time. So yes, in our normal protocol, that would be supervised by the other person.
Okay.
And Sean's already written the procedures and stuff for those. He met with the police chief, um, I think it was last week or the week before. And now we're going to meet with the police chief and fire chief, uh, to get the incident stuff laid out to see who Sean falls under during those reports. And then we'll have, that'll be the last piece that we put together. But no, we already have it. Uh, the person that we've already, uh, looked at and interviewed, uh, for the part-time position, he's already FAA approved pilot and holds the same credentials as what Sean does currently.
Okay. So is it fair to say that the permanent part-time lead drone pilot may have to be on call at times if the seasonal?
Yeah, he's on call now.
He's on call now? Okay. All right.
There's a drowning or a fire or whatever, he gets called.
So if he comes in now and he has to work thirty-two hours or something, then later during the week, he doesn't report to us during that week. Because we have to watch it because he could not have, I think it's nine hundred and ninety-nine hours or something like that.
All right.
So you're, uh, this staffing has two drone pilots. One's a permanent halftime position and the other is a seasonal fractional position.
Correct.
I'm, I'm just confirming my understanding because it's unusual staffing. So you got point five and you got point two seasonally, something like that? What's the fraction?
I don't remember the exact hour number, but the, the need for the part-time person is just, because I have a limited number of hours for Sean.
Yeah, it's, but, and it's scheduling. I get that. Just Mark, Councilman Martin was exploring the hierarchy. I'm exploring how that staffing is actually represented in the numbers. So you got point five and, I'm saying point two, but I'm estimating, right? But less, correct? And Sean remains on call? What about the other drone pilot? Is he on call too?
Once we get them on, we haven't been able to sit down and figure out exactly how these next two weeks are going to go on the beach patrol. But once we look at that, if it's not a need for that person Monday through Thursday, then that person will only be here when Sean is off on the weekends and he cannot get something done during the weekdays. And then we will lay out a schedule for that person for the summer. But Sean will be the on-call person. The other person, if Sean's out of town, then that person will be on call. But other circumstances, Sean will be on call.
Who is managing the drone program? Who, who's looking at these two part-time people?
On the beach services side, um, that drone pilot will fall underneath the police department, just as beach services does. Um, the other one, Sean reports to me.
The other part-time person working elsewhere? Is he, or is two hundred hours a year?
He is a college student that is here for the summer. And we also are hiring him for a intern position in development services.
He has, he has all the certifications also that Sean has.
Um, Sheila, did you have a comment? All right. So back to the point from Councilmember Bach on the division of, of fractional hours. Um, I, I know in this year's budget, and maybe that's not the right phrase. I believe in this year's budget, there was discussions last year about a, having a full-time drone pilot on staff.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I brought that to board, um, reconsidered what we were looking at. Looked at the other department heads, called them back in, asked for services hours and what they thought. And could not determine where there would be a need for that person to be full-time.
Because what, so what I'm hearing in the conversation is the lead pilot will supplement the seasonal beach services pilot. Because you just said the beach services pilot is seasonal for only about two hundred hours.
Correct.
So there might be some, some.
Right now.
Supplement services there because one of them's not going to work every single weekend.
I'm good.
Right?
One of them will not be working, yes. So what it is right now, we have a task that Sean needs to do. We identified the task that needs to be done. If Mike has something he's video, videoed, then Mike does it. During the sand project, we had specific things that Sean flew to make record for. But other than that, if we need, he is part-time. So right now he's reporting. If we start to see the hours and what we did last year, when hours started to get it during the winter months, we did not have him report to work because there is not a need for that person that day. That's why I say there is not a need for him to be full-time. We look at it through the year. I can't say he's going to work every Monday through Friday.
Right.
Because he's not. And I can't say he's going to work every weekend because he's not. The rest of the time, he's on call for those services if something comes up in emergency services.
All right. I'm just trying to understand if there's an increasing need for a drone pilot position. Um.
No.
Okay. So for example, I've, I've received phone calls from people asking how we validate the forty-one foot or the thirty-five foot building heights after the, they've been erected, right? They're under roof and, and maybe they're in the finishing stages. How do we validate those, those height requirements that we have in our ordinances? I can't imagine that someone's going out there on a ladder in a tape measure, but.
No, the surveyor has to provide documentation for that.
Okay. Is it not supported by some drone activity? My understanding is drones can measure building heights.
Drones can if you certify them through the state for those practices. If you would go to like, to go to survey quality equipment.
Okay.
That's, that costs more money than having a surveyor put his stamp on it and say it's forty-one feet.
All right. But, okay. All right. I understand.
I do not see the need to have Sean to work full-time.
All right. So we, we need to move on. But the summary here is, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Martin. At one point, you recommended a full-time drone operator. You've since changed your mind. That's.
Correct.
Is that correct?
A hundred percent.
Based on your assessment of need?
Correct.
So you're staying with permanent point five and what I'm calling a point two seasonal, who is also going to become an employee on an intern basis. Is that correct?
Yes. He will be working as an intern downstairs for the planner and building specialist.
So there has been a shift based on your assessment. Okay. We can, that's, it is what it is.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay. So, uh.
Fix aside, we don't need a drone, full-time drone pilot.
And it's nothing against Sean. I mean, I, I don't want that part, I mean, to be discrediting. It's not about the person. It's about the need for that position.
Absolutely. That's, that's why I, I've been talking in terms of a lead drone pilot versus a seasonal drone pilot. Because these are positions that need to be defined and filled. Doesn't matter who fills the position, you know, today or tomorrow or three years from now. It's the structure of how are we utilizing the services? Is there some sort of hierarchy with protocols that, you know, defined? And you addressed all of that. So, thank you.
Now going through this year, looking, uh, we have a new police chief. And looking at services on emergency services side, if it comes down to where we believe that we need to have somebody at different hours, then we'll bring it back.
All right. Moving along.
Moving along.
All right. Moving along. The next one.
Before we do that, um, Councilmember has been asked for a break. Can we take a five-minute break? Anticipating walking longer, working a little bit longer.
That member showed you just.
Bye, Charlie.
Five minutes, please. All right. We resume our meeting from the break. Back to you, Mr. Kelly.
Uh, beach tax and number forty-six, these are basically the exact same things, numbers that we had presented back in, um, two months ago for the sand discussions. Then once you look at the, um, funding of it, you can turn to forty-six, seven forty-six. And that's the breakdown of the budget. The operating expenses, we sort of went over back then too.
All numbers we've seen before.
Yep. Certainly like seeing the trend going up.
Yes. Um, and also during the conversation that we had about the funding, y'all wanted a quarterly report back from Mr. Hatton. So when he does his financial quarterlies, he'll also be going over these numbers as well. So you can sort of track that.
Excellent.
Um, you see that in forty-one, forty-one, uh, dune maintenance, we have monies in there for the frontal plantings of the dune.
And that's getting pushed back, right?
Well, that, yes, but it'll be in this year's budget.
It, right.
And then Mr. Hatton has the transfers going over to the project.
Did you get any phone calls after Tuesday night for volunteers for plantings?
Am I? Or are you?
Did we?
No.
Oh.
We never get that call. It's a good idea though. So then you turn to the next one, beach nourishment, number forty-seven. This is the same kind of things Mr. Hatton went over. As you estimated expenses, it shows you the FEMA project, the special obligation bonds, the beach nourishment grants, special obligation bonds, number B instead of A, transfers, then transfer from accommodation tax.
Is there other grants that are possible out there that will enter into these numbers?
The twenty million dollar grant sort of got us knocked out of this next round. We, we are applying for one through Johnny and them on this, and then we're applying for some others on the other side. And we continue to ask the representatives for more money, so. There's always a chance, but I'd say the twenty million dollar allotment sort of, other people are in line too that need something. And then you can turn to the beach nourishment, forty-seven, seven forty-six. You'll see that engineering costs are in there. We have five hundred thousand dollars put in there for the phase three because we know that will not be done in one year, so we're phasing those dollars over the three years. Lockwood folly, that's what we decided to do with the core last year, so that's our portion to keep the lockwood folly open if the core comes and dredges. Then you see the contracted service, the hundred thousand dollars, that's for the annual, I think it's really ninety-seven thousand, one hundred in there, but that's the money to, according to our permits, that we needed to do the surveying and analysis of our beach and then also the area that we took the sand from down in front of Caswell. Then you see some bond interest money. And then you see the reserves for beach nourishment. I said we, we sort of went over this before.
Right.
And the sand tax stays, point oh-five, as y'all discussed then, maintaining that level. And if there's no other questions on sand or sand taxes or accommodations or those kind of things, it's, it's just the review. We've presented the entire budget to you, as you know. We've given you the capital improvement plans, they've been in the back of each one. We went back in and filled in the hours for the fire department, so you have those. We'll probably pull them out of your books and put them into one folder, so you'll have the capital improvement plan in one section. So you'll have that as we went through that. We had done some spreadsheets for you during the review. There, there's the page two. These are the large items that we discussed through the budget process and got the consensus to move forward with. And you'll see where the dollars are coming from, salaries, benefits, capital improvement, capital outlay, conditional, I mean, excuse me, capital improvement plan, outlay monies, and then the ARP funds. So you see those numbers in front of you and we broke those out. Councilman Martin had asked a question to make sure that we were, where we were getting these funds from and what was allotted and where we were utilizing these funds. So you see some improvements, the second part of the commercial sidewalks. And the good thing is the intern that we have coming in, he is a CAD person and GIS, so he is already starting to overlay the next phase of sidewalks for us, but we can present that to DOT in a different manner, so hopefully we can get those things pushed through. And then you also, the rec center, the three hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred, that was monies we put in there. Hopefully we can move things along and have something. I don't know if we'll actually spend that money this year. If not, then it just goes to reserve fund for the project. Resurfacing the tennis ball and pickleball courts, which is a misspelled word down there, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had discussed. The Park and Rec Advisory Board looked at that as well. Then we have some Middleton Park improvements, but I can go over all these again, or these are the things we've already discussed and just wanted to refresh everybody's memory of what y'all have talked about and what we're planning on doing.
I just had one question to, to this point. And, and that would be understanding, I understand driving efficiencies by splitting the department into building inspection and planning.
Yes.
My concern is increasing the cost for those services by splitting them out into two different departments. And do we foresee at some point a gain in the efficiencies to bring back some cost savings to that area of our services?
Yeah, well, the cost this year was basically, we took the department, as you know, and sort of split it out.
Right.
During the interview process we've had this week with the planners, some of them have, well, all of them now are separated just like we are. One of them had been separated, combined, separated, combined, and now they're separated again where he had worked at. And we asked sort of the same kind of questions you had. We had looked at adding a position into building for the building side of it and a position into zoning, on the zoning side of it. I don't think that we're creating any extra dollars or cost just by separating it. I think the same cost would have been there because we would ask for the same two people. Going forward, I see it staying separated and the economic developer working with the planning as well as everyone else. And I think what we've done is in these interviews that we didn't have last time because people weren't interested, it opened up the, the doors for us to get a better qualified, better thorough person on planning and has seen larger projects and things that we have coming in front of us. They've written the changes, they've seen growth, they've managed the growth, they've started from bottom and gone to the top. So I think by splitting departments, we're going to provide a better service for the citizens and not necessarily at a higher cost.
Okay.
Roll on.
My only other question is with the street division. I'll wait until we get there if you're going to. You were kind of stepping through these one at a time.
Yeah, no, we're, we're good. I'll just, I'll just.
I didn't want to get ahead of any of my colleagues if they had. So my only question with the street division is we're, we're kind of, we moved the research, if we want to call it that, for greenways off of parks and rec and moved it over to the street division, right? They're, they're the ones that are going to look into greenways instead of parks and rec.
The Park and Rec Advisory Board has taken it upon one of their tasks to look at that.
Okay.
So the review of it will be in probably Park and Recs, but the work will be done on the other side.
Only, because my question was going to be, where's the most appropriate resource to pursue grants? Is it the street division or is it parks and rec? So if parks and recs is going to stay engaged, there, they need to go look for grant money.
Yes, sir.
Good.
All right, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not sure, I'm like, Mr. Martin, I'm not sure if this is where I need to address this and this is going to really make you mad. Mr. Kelly is driving a two thousand and five town vehicle that has a piece of plywood in the passenger side, I mean, driver's side to keep his feet from hitting the road. The town seal on the side of it is so faded that it's embarrassing. How many, how many miles is on that vehicle?
Only has like ninety-seven thousand miles.
I want to see the bottom of your shoes.
It gets us from point.
It has a piece of plywood over it, so his feet don't look like Fred Flintstone. I know that there is a way, Mr. Hatton, that you can find it in this budget and keep our tax rate to find a new vehicle for administration.
I am going to buy him some new envelopes on this.
A new piece of plywood, maybe?
Add a new piece of plywood.
And there's no way there's only ninety-seven thousand miles on that vehicle?
It is. And don't be mad if we get a vehicle and now he'd still drive that one and economic development and planner drive the other.
I need some backup here.
Well, perhaps.
Don't you think the vehicle should reflect its driver?
This is the gentleman who represents our town, who pulls up and speaks with our citizens and goes to conferences and meetings with other town officials and I just think that, and I've said this since two thousand and sixteen.
You are absolutely right.
Thank you.
We need two vehicles, we need two vehicles. We cannot put our manager at risk should he go through the floorboard.
Well, I would, I would suggest that this could be an ideal opportunity for us to pilot an electric vehicle for the town.
He'll never drive that.
We would procure an electric vehicle. For administration to drive.
The planner and economic person.
Can have an electric vehicle.
And he always does this every year and it's always his employees, there's somebody that always needs a vehicle before he needs a vehicle.
Since we don't have anything.
We do have a charging station right out here.
We have charging stations now right outside the door.
Need a motion for a new vehicle.
What was that motion for?
I make a motion that Mr. Hatton find the money to purchase a new vehicle for the town manager to drive.
With, I don't mean.
Is there a second?
No, 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 I'm not talking to you.
What we've done this year is we've looked at the, the police department and we had, like we talked about, we had to put in our bids early for police vehicles. So we put in ours for the three vehicles. And lo and behold, one of those came in before even the ones that they owe us from two years ago. I don't know how that works. But we changed vendors as well. So they put in, towns put in, and so they have extra vehicles sitting there that we're going to be looking at, maybe possibly purchasing. They'd be the Dodge Durango, they're not police interceptors or whatever the right word is. They're just Dodge Durangos and they, they're in between thirty-six and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So we still get those at the state rate and those kind of things.
And there's no plywood in this?
And the plywood's underneath the carpet. It's not like you see. It's not that bad.
Do we need a motion here or is this going to be accommodated in the current budget?
You don't, we don't need a mo, if we're going to do something, then we would be in bracket budget amendment and that was the way.
We don't want to come back and have to sanction you for failing to change vehicles.
Thank you.
All right, this seems to be the consensus of council that you need to get it into a safer, more appropriate vehicle.
He is insured.
All right, we're on the record here, so.
Okay.
Well, I just want to clearly state that my condition is that we look at an electric vehicle to pilot a program with the town.
Yeah, well, we have two new positions. He wants to give it to the ED, that's fine, let's get an electric vehicle. We have the charging station, we should lead the way here.
Thank you. So you got two for one. Anything else in general fund?
We'll take the Durango.
Before we get to enterprise fund, because there is something we're going to discuss in enterprise fund that's going to have to change.
All right, roll.
Go.
Enterprise fund, so we had Scott here early, but we went ahead and let him go. We took our, one of our grapple trucks to Raleigh to get serviced and get work on. We drove it up there and then we found out that the chassis itself has a crack in it and we're, we're fortunate that it didn't split in half when they drove it up there. They are looking to see if they can mend it or put it back together, but it's at a crucial point, it's where the pivoting part where they turn the apparatus and pick up and spin back, so that's where it broke at. So this year we have in for a leaf, leaf truck. We may have to flip those and do the leaf truck this year, I mean, excuse me, the grapple truck this year and leaf truck next year when we're going to do the grapple. And with that said, the leaf truck was going to cost more. So what we would do, if that's what happens, we would just take that money, put it into reserve, and then the money for the truck next year would be added to that. So it's, it's the same amount of dollars, it may just be purchased at a different time.
And didn't Scott say that it is possible to use that grapple truck to pick up the larger piles of leaves?
Yes, they, they use grapple truck as needed or as the leaf truck breaks down. But that's the only other change within the solid ways, it may be the flip of those two vehicles, but it's in your capital improvement plan.
Any discussion?
Has to be done.
Anything else?
No, yes, ma'am. Now I'll get back to my other sheet. So then we, we've already discussed the separation of building inspection and planning. Fire fee increase, you discussed the twenty percent, that would raise it, raise three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. You have the nineteen hundred and ninety-nine square foot and less, single-family home, they would see an increase of thirty dollars a year. Getting to the salaries, we are looking, we're going to do a market adjustment for ours instead of the basic COLA. What we have done, we have taken it, we have a hundred and fifty-one full-time employees that would receive and out of that hundred and fifty-one, we know we have some vacant positions and new hires, so we take those out, so it comes around a hundred and twenty-nine, I think. So we take that number, we take the number that the COLA would have generated and we came to a formula to make sure that the people, I think our bottom salary person was thirty-one thousand, oh-two-oh, that's a person we'll see the most significant raise. And, and then it goes on up and then larger numbers at the bottom and lesser and lesser and nothing on the top. So that's the way we've laid this out. We've also looked at, we cannot burden the taxpayers for all these dollars on a continued basis. COLA is the cost of living as that parameter. So what we did is we took that number in half and, and what we were going to do is give a supplement check November, December timeframe to make up the difference, so that doesn't carry over to the tax base on the next year. So that, that's one thing we looked at, pay grades, we discussed those. For the last six years, we've been doing a five percent fluctuation on pay grades to keep up with the market. We will continue to do that this year. We have analyzed the pay grades and it looks like we shall be able to move everybody up one pay grade. Once we do the market adjustment, to be able to get them into a higher pay grade without having to sacrifice dollars out of the taxpayers and then make us more marketable to the outside trying to fill these empty positions. With that said, we are trying to make sure this year our bottom salary was fifteen dollars an hour for full-time and it looks like it's going to go to about fifteen seventy-seven. So that, that will help us in the market. This year also, we've taken seasonal time, of course, we've taken seasonal for the beach services and we tried to come up with a fixed dollar amount for those instead of paying everybody ten more cents or twenty cents or five cent less. The numbers were all over the place when we tried to unify that, so you'll see that in the pay scale as well. Benefits, the discussion on that, we're leaving things as we are, but we're going to look back at those in the December, November, December range, so we can bring something back at the retreat from insurance cost and those kind of things. We should have those for the next year by that time. And then we can look at the market and see what we're going to do moving forward with benefits across the board on that side.
So as an item for the economic portion of the retreat next year, which my good friend, Councilman Martin, recommended, we should look very carefully at the way in which we index our cost of living. So there was a fascinating article in the New York Times. Of course, the inflation rate dipped slightly, there was a lot of cheering about that to eight-one from eight-three. But the, the Times economic writer focused on something which I didn't even know existed. It's called the Core CPI Index, which measures fewer items and less volatile ones, not gasoline. And the Core Index is at six-two. So as we think about it in the future, indexing to the CPI, we could use the Core Index, which typically tracks lower, and that would be a way to make cost of living adjustments more sustainable because at eight percent year over year, especially if the Fed fails, we won't be able to run those kind of numbers. So just a thought, and we could pursue that later on, and I'm not sure how many employers are pegged to the Core Index versus the CPI overall. are pegged to the Core Index versus the CPI overall, but something to think about.
At this time, looking through it, it's a 50/50 split on if they're actually doing a COLA, or they're looking at a market adjustment to improve everything. We went with the market adjustment route to try to get everybody.
That would be another option, certainly.
We've already done the enterprise fund, quick review. Rates, like I said, no tax increase, no sand tax increase, no sewer rate increase, sewer district fee stays the same. Water rates, we did the base rate in 21, 22, and 2020, 22, 23, we'll do the second phase of that, and basically, that is just for the rate for the volume tiers that will go up, excuse me. So what we did, we tried to figure up some just rough numbers. Customers of 4,000 gallons will see a monthly increase of about 48 cents, or on an annual $5.76.
That does what Mr. Martin was talking about, for giving incentive for water conservation.
Right.
Okay.
Stay under the 4,000.
Increase in solid waste residential customers, the beachside 52 cent increase, which will be on a total annual basis of $6.19. Non-beachside, 57 cents a month, you'll see $6.84. Increase in stormwater residential, $1.41, that total comes to $1,692. Rates are things that you can change periodically through the year, they're not taxes. We have a new fee schedule, rate schedule, that's coming out for stormwater, because we hadn't done that before, for single-family residential and for commercial. We've charged those things, but it's been sort of ate up in Steve's revenue. So we've met with staff, and we've separated everything, and we've about got the fee schedule laid out with these changes in departments, to make sure zoning has theirs, building inspection has theirs, and stormwater has theirs. So this rate of $1.41 is what's needed currently. I'm not saying that we don't come back to y'all in, in January and tell you we can lower this rate, once we're able to track for six months what the fees do on the building side. And if it raises that, then we can lower the rate back down. So, that is a number that may come back to you during the year to, to change.
So the, the fees that go to the respective departments are on top of permits, the monies that comes through permits for stormwater, et cetera?
So, right now, when they come in and get a building permit, some of these fees were already incorporated, that bit I've hit, but that's, to me, that's not a true statement, even though I say it. We never charged for those other things. We had always kept that fee the same, and never even added stormwater into those fees. So the fees has been a blank fee. So right now, we've itemized inside that fee, and separate them out into each department. So now, the developer, when they come in, and we're going to do a little education thing on this, their stormwater now is going to cost them probably $450 to $500 extra for a building permit, because now we are charging for the stormwater. We never have charged for stormwater, we charged a $50 fee, I think is what it was. So those kind of things, laying it out, that's why I say, it's a, it's a number that we're anticipating, and we put some numbers in the budget to reflect that, but on the other side, I don't know how much we will grow and how fast we'll grow with that. So that's why I said, the, the rate will balance us currently, but it may be a rate that we come back to you and say, we can lower this rate for the customers due to the development. We're not matching the same development numbers as what building is, we're not saying we're going to build 400 homes or 300 homes, we're figuring everything on 200. And then driveway permits, pool permits, now have a stormwater permit where they didn't have a permit before. And then, we're looking at on the building side and stormwater side, and Sheila can probably attest to this, somebody comes in, hands a building permit in, oh, they forgot seven pages of it, they didn't sign this, they didn't do that, so now we got staff calling that person, come do this, come do that. And once we get that done, then we got to spend the time to call that person, tell them to come back and bring the other material. Well, on the stormwater side, when they get a permit, they may have forgot to add in the cubic foot of something, or move the driveway, or now Mr. Hatton decided to build a pools, and now he's changed his plans. Well, to do that, they've changed the concept of that, we got to review it again. So we have fees built in there for people to make modifications, where we didn't have before. And we give so many modifications, we charge for a new permit. So I think it's going to be better. I just don't have that final number, or we're comfortable with that final number, that's why I said, this $1.41 may come down.
I appreciate that, and thank you for looking at the, at the fees, I think it's an important point, when we present the budget, that the taxpayers realize that they're not underwriting development.
And that's what we're trying to show.
Exactly. So I think that would be an important point to make. Also, I think just doing a very soft comparison to other beach towns, what they charge in Advalorem, of course, St. James is a very separate thing, but what they charge in sand tax in Advalorem is considerably more than Oak Island, and I think that perspective would be healthy, so people appreciate what a good job Oak Island has done in keeping taxes low, because we're in the middle of the pack, we are by no means at the top. So if we could include that comparison, I think that would be very helpful for them to see.
Well, that's all we have, we've gone through the budget, we've gone through all the items again, we went through the items through the departments, received questions from council, provided some information. One other thing, I reckon, about the staffing, we are looking at the software changes, we're going to be sending out RFPs for that here soon. We have probably three companies that we sort of selected for them to give us some prices on. It was interesting interviewing these people, two, two of the three people we had yesterday had Tyler, and now they have switched from Tyler and gone to Inbo, I think it is, and that's one of the ones we're looking at as well. So those, those changes are still out there, and we are doing that currently, trying to get the software program changed. The other thing is, what is that, Merit, we turned in, y'all saw what we were doing for Merit, there's a program that we're looking at switching that over, that comes more to a defined number system, for us to be able to look at, and it has a plan, corrective plan built into the program, to try to give the department heads and supervisors a little bit more control and leeway over that, instead of having a fixed number, if you got 10, you get this, or 9, you get that. It's a fix, it's not as fixed as that, but it gives a, a plan for Mr. Hatton to improve if he was doing something wrong. And it's built into that, so then, three months later, you go back for the revow, you may only give them 1% to start with, and then the other incentive, if they make these corrections, then they get the other one and a half at the end. So we're looking at changing those as well.
The only thing I would add, along the lines of what Mayor White was suggesting when it comes to some comparisons, since stormwater fees, whether it's the developer or the individual, may be faced with increases in the upcoming fiscal year, I think it would help offset that if there was a, a presentable summarized stormwater improvement plan that could be communicated. An increase in services, or an increase in fees, would suggest that there should be improvements in stormwater over what we've historically done in this area. So I know we just have the new engineer on staff, I, I'd really like to hear more from that individual on what is our stormwater improvement plan, more of a long-range plan, and perhaps how some of these increases in fees support that, that improvement plan.
Okay.
Good point.
Yeah, I know he's working with Mike on the, sort of informational kind of thing to be able to go out, he's worked on one for the contractors as well, so they'll understand what's coming. And we had talked about, yes, the fees would go into effect July 1st, but given a grace period of maybe 30 days or something on that, and then what we've seen, we've done that before, and everybody's going to come apply that month, try to get ahead of that $5 fee, so I don't know what we're going to do on that one yet.
What I, what I think would help, I, I agree with that, if you could also furnish, because we, we have a new set of eyes looking at a historic problem, and so he undoubtedly has identified some critical things that need to be undertaken, so, therefore, as he tackles those problems identified 1 through 4, he needs additional revenues, hence the service cost increase, if I may just amend your motion, so that they see the reason why.
Good point. Any last comments? Last questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor.
I'll have to let you go first.
Thank you very much.
He looked straight at me, so I didn't want to disappoint her.
We leaving the books again?